Are here to listen. We are here today to listen to your comments. Your feedback will help guide us to our decision making as we assess this plan and move forward. We all know we continue to face a nationwide shortage of truck and bus drivers. We are seeing the impact on our schools, on the supply chain, and the growing need for qualified drivers who help to keep our roads safe during severe weather. Governor Kathy Hochul and I are committed to doing all we can to address the shortage of these essential workers and to get them on the road as quickly and safely as possible. We are so grateful for those who drive our children to and from school and for those who transport vital goods across our state and our nation and those who drive toward a storm instead of hunkering down inside. We need more of you. And one way to expand opportunity and access is to allow third parties to conduct road tests for people seeking a commercial driver license. This would make more test locations available statewide and when combined with existing DMV locations will increase overall testing capacity. Let me be clear. This proposal is intended to increase our CDL testing capacity. There is no intent to reduce or replace our existing state-run program, rather to supplement it. We look forward to your input. But before we open it up for comments, I want to turn it over to Deputy Commissioner Joe Cristofoli to tell you a little bit more about the proposal. And then Deputy Commissioner Janet Ho will go over the general ground rules. Deputy Commissioner Joe Cristofoli.
Thank you. As the Commissioner noted, the feedback here that we're going to get from the hearing will definitely help us to guide our decision making and our plans. So at this point, my comments are tentative and represent our initial thoughts on this initiative. Our intent for this program is to help increase our CDL testing capacity by supplementing our existing state-run program. The third-party participants will test at their own locations. So this will expand the number of statewide sites and our overall ability to test more applicants in a timely manner. We will set up our program following all federal third-party requirements in establishing the criteria for participation. We'll set up the necessary training and certification process. We'll develop a monitoring and audit process. We'll establish and meet all necessary reporting requirements. Our plan is to initially start third-party testing with our sister transportation agencies. This will allow us to evaluate the program and refine the program as needed before expanding to other entities. I'm going to turn it over now to Janet Ho, who will provide some ground rules.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for participating today. As both the Commissioner and Joe have mentioned, we look very much forward to hearing what everyone has to say this morning. Just a few kind of rules for the virtual hearing process, which I think some of you may have seen at the beginning with the screen that we had up when the hearing first opened. If you would like to speak and you haven't already alerted us either by sending us an email to the CDL third-party testing email, please just use the raise your hand function at the bottom of the WebEx. This will notify our host and you will be added to the speaking list in the order that you raise your hand. We ask when you each come up that you state your name when speaking and if you can, the organization or group that you're affiliated with, if that is the case, unless you're just speaking on behalf of yourself. In the interest of time, just so everyone knows, at least at this moment, we have a little over 30 speakers scheduled. We are asking that everyone try to keep their comments to about five minutes just so that we can stay and make sure that we stay within the timeframe of this hearing, which is scheduled from 10 o'clock this morning to 12:30. If you have any technical difficulties during this event or if you require the interpreter, please let us know in the chat function. We can have somebody respond to you to try to work through your issue. And then we just want to remind everyone that we very much appreciate any written comments or submitted testimony that you might want to share with us. And we'd appreciate that if you sent it into the email address, which was cdlthirdpartytesting, all one word, at DMV.ny.gov. And we will continue to take written testimony until February 4th, Friday, February 4th. So we will also make a recording of this hearing available on our website at DMV.ny.gov once it is completed and we have the recording ready to post. So thank you, everyone, so much. We look forward to hearing from you. And we will start with the first speaker. All right. The first person that we have on our list is Susan Radish. Again, if you don't mind stating your name and who you are affiliated with. You should be off mute.
Hello, this is Susan Radash. I'm Deputy Director of State Operations for CSEA.
Good morning, Susan. Welcome. You can get started, Susan.
I'm here to listen to your presentation.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right. So the next individual scheduled to speak is Shannon L. Goodsell.
Good morning. How is everyone?
We're great. Good morning, Shannon. Welcome.
Good morning. My name is Shannon Goodsell. I'm calling on behalf of First Student. I'm the third-party administrator in the state of Illinois, where we have, we've worked alongside the state for many years conducting road testing for school bus drivers. And a few of the best practices that we have established and followed through with with the state is our structure is set up with an entity license. First Student is the largest third-party test site in Illinois. So it's managed under an entity license for a certain because we have so many sub-location that we test physically at. Each of those holds a branch license. And we have one administrator, which is myself, who works directly with the state to organize the requirements regarding facility testing, the requirements that the locations have to uphold to meet the state and federal standards, as well as the safety officer license, the individuals to make sure that they're within compliance to be able to conduct the test, and then the auditing process. So we stay in pretty constant communication regarding administering rural documentation and auditing, both in conjunction with each other and then self-audits through the company. So best practice, in my opinion, would be to make sure that the individuals or the entities that are licensed, that there's a solid point of contact to alleviate a lot of back and forth or confusion between the individual at the state level who is managing the program and the entities that they're working with. So we just try to keep everything streamlined so everybody stays on the same page when there's changes and to make sure that the integrity of the program is being maintained.
Is that completed, Shannon?
I'm sorry, I keep going off mute. Yes, that is what I'd like to attest to as best practice.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very, very much.
The next speaker that we have is Joseph Hilt. You should be off mute, Joseph.
I'm sorry. Good morning.
Good morning, Joseph. Welcome. Go right ahead.
Good morning. I'm a transportation supervisor with a school district in Schenectady County, Shalmount Central School. And it would be my recommendation that people who are 19A certified examiners be considered to be third-party providers to assist with this process. They go through the DMV certification process. They're tested by your investigators and they're audited quite regularly. So I mean, I think that would give us an opportunity to expand, at least for our local district schools, that our own drivers might be a way to alleviate or lessen some of the stress on the licensing process for people. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, Joseph. We appreciate your comments.
Thank you. The next speaker that we have on deck is Paul Matthews.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Paul?
Paul?
We can hear you.
Okay, good.
You're good. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Paul Matthews. I'm the Director of Operations for a group of auto schools on Long Island and a board member of the New York State Association of Professional Driving Schools. Our association encompasses dozens of professional driving schools across New York State, many of which do CDL training. And the association supports third-party testing being involved to both shorten wait times for road tests and alleviate a lot of the issues that Department of Motor Vehicle and the state is having right now. We also advocate third-party testing for all type of licenses, not just CDLs. But in particular case with CDLs, we believe it can alleviate a backlog and create a flexibility for the public when it comes to certain situations. Third-party testing, where it's been successful in other states, often allows for additional times, even weekend testing, that type of thing that isn't necessarily available underneath the DMV structure. And these tests, just to give you a simple little example, an applicant has a Class A tractor trailer test on Friday. There's significant other tests positive for COVID today. They've got to isolate. Now their next test is not going to be for four to eight weeks. Whereas if you have third-party testing, frequently with a flexible setup can have slots and spaces available to do tests and at least give people the option of being able to take a test sooner. And if you involve driving schools and professional instructors involved with the third-party testing, you're talking about people who are not only licensed in the vehicles that the tests are going to be conducted, people with successful histories at driving those type of vehicles, and instructors who have far more training and education as far as actually conducting the test. And, you know, just simple things I just want to point out, especially as far as the DMV side goes, that MVLEs have a very difficult and dangerous job. And some would almost say almost a thankless job, conducting road tests. But a great deal of the stress and anger and confrontations that wind up occurring at actual road tests and a lot of the issues occur because there's all this pressure that if someone goes to a test, doesn't have the right paperwork, gets stuck in traffic and misses an appointment, or even fail a test. They all know that there's a significant weight in having to actually retest and get another test. Just the idea that they have the option of a third-party tester who might be able to provide a test in a week or two alleviates a lot of that stress prior to anyone even going to a normal road test that they've scheduled with the Department of Motor Vehicles. For all of these reasons, our association is in support of this concept. It's been successful in other areas and New York State shouldn't be any different. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Paul.
And can I just say, we do appreciate your recognition of the hard work that our MVLEs do as well. So thank you so much for that. All right, the next speaker that we have on tap is Ross Coleman. Ross, you should be off mute now.
I'm off. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hi, my name's Ross Coleman. I'm here representing NISCADA, which is the New York State Camp Directors Association. I myself am the owner-director of a day camp on Long Island. Our group has summer camps and a lot of our members also have nursery schools across the state. We recognize this bus driver shortage as a real crisis for us. We, our camps go about getting drivers in different ways. Some get them through bus companies, some license drivers on their own as we have done, a combination thereof. Basically, we've had somebody who's done CDL training for us for, you know, 20 years or so, who's very qualified to train. And we have seen the requirements change significantly over the years. So I understand the big part of this meeting is about third-party testing. We are in full support of that. Certainly, the turnaround in time is difficult often. So we're definitely in support of third-party testing. I do want to bring up an issue we have, which I don't know if this is the right spot for or not, but here I go. The under-the-hood portion of the school bus test has become very burdensome and, in my own opinion, has not really added to safety because our school bus drivers are not allowed to go under the hood anyway. So basically, the test, a lot of times, never even begins as far as driving with a person not getting through what, in many ways, they will never use again. They're being asked to memorize a long list of things, which is more of the bus mechanic than is of the bus driver. So I think these points are, they do go together in that we have a real crisis in getting people to drive who otherwise are willing and would be great, safe drivers. It's nothing to do with the safety of driving. Additionally, a lot of states have already adopted this. The federal government has put that out there. They put it out there, though, through the end of March, which doesn't really do a lot of good for us, for camps or schools. There's just not enough time to get it done. So we're hopeful that can get extended, at least through September in the short term, to allow our camps and schools to get drivers. Because right now, between those two issues, we really are in a very, very difficult position.
Thank you. Thanks, Ross. And we are very aware of the ever-changing requirements that really come from the federal government. And also, we also are very aware of your concerns and others' concerns having to do with under the hood. So thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker that we have ready to go is Robert Brisbane. Robert, you should be off mute now.
I believe I'm off mute. You can hear me?
We can hear you. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for the time today and the opportunity to discuss this. It's an important concept. And I think it's wonderful that we can combine public with private enterprise. I think that's what makes the world go round. And I'm Robert Brisbane, President of the Bus Association of New York, which is a BANDY group, which is the motor coach operators. And what, I'm also owner of a bus company, school bus and motor coach company in Vales Gate, New York, West Point Tours. And what's at hand today is drivers. And we need them for tourism, to get kids to and from school, and the supply chain. And those are all pressing, very pressing needs right now. And there's going to be an influx of drivers and applicants and candidates coming up soon. And it could be overwhelming. The third-party testing is an excellent idea. We have many 19A certified examiners that could do this. Right now, there's a federal program that's going to start on February 7th, the Entry Level Driver Training, the ELDT, which is going to further the training requirements of everyone that we pass for a CDL. So it's going to be even more stringent. And these companies that are doing the training, especially privately-owned companies, we have to answer to our insurance companies. So safety is obviously paramount in this situation. And our insurance rates are incredibly high right now. So we're only going to put the safest people that we know behind the wheel. So we realize safety is very, very important in this aspect of things. And we have a lot of 19A certified examiners that have been in the business, the bus business, for many years and are ready to go. We're ready to go. So with the motor coach guys, it affects tourism. Tourism brings dollars back to the state. And we're going to have an influx of drivers coming up, we hope, in a very short period of time. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Thanks very much, Robert. And we agree, safety is the number one issue and that's what we're really geared for. So thank you.
Thanks, Bob. The next speaker that we have on the list is Paul Maury. Hold on just a sec. I think we're getting him. Oh, all right. It looks like Paul may have dropped off. So the next speaker that we have on tap is Ken Meyer.
Hello, this is Ken Meyer. I'm one of the owners of Cary Professional Driving School in Middletown, New York. I've been a professional driver since 1974. And I do appreciate you all letting me speak. Just a couple of things. It would definitely help out, the third-party testing, the turnaround, if I have someone who doesn't get through all of the three required parts of the road test. That is your pre-trip first. If you don't get through that, like the last fellow was talking about, you don't go to your maneuvers and then you don't go to your driving. So that being said, us, my wife and myself, as a small commercial driving school, again, I have a different perspective when it comes to driving, teaching people cars or trucks, because I drove and I do get in our truck. Bottom line is, and it's a shame, because the inspectors do the best they can. I know they get some training, usually once or twice a year, to get in a truck to see what it's all about, the different maneuvers and the driving. That being said, the majority of them, as far as I can tell throughout the state, do not have CDLs. Unfortunately, don't understand the nuances of the trucks. None of these trucks, other than the new ones that have automatics, and I won't train with an automatic. I train with a truck that has to be double-clutch. I know people sometimes don't understand that. Some of the inspectors, again, not having it. If there was an emergency, they would probably not be able to operate a truck to get it off the road, a medical emergency, I mean. So that being said, I think our inspectors, while they're doing the best they can, I think it should be and it would be to the state's best interest to have someone who can give the test that actually understands when it comes to driving, missing a couple of gears once in a while, stalling a truck. I took a student to the road test two weeks ago. I stopped the switch so I could drive to the road test. I stalled the truck. So it does happen and it should not be an immediate failure. And again, I'm not actually, because I'm saying I want to make sure that they're getting a fair road test. I know I've talked to some fellows who do third-party testing, Massachusetts, Connecticut, Pennsylvania. And again, it will help in the long run. If somebody doesn't get through all three parts of the road test, the turnaround sometimes now is over a month when that student March 8th is the road test we're on right now. So if I have somebody who fails, for whatever reason, on their driving or on the maneuvers, it could be five, six, seven weeks before they get back. And then really, it's usually just a matter of nerves. So we want people to be safe. I've been driving, as I said, for almost 48 years. Safety is number one. And my thing is competing at these state and national truck driving championships, which I've done for many years. It's all about safety. That should be everyone's number one concern. I do appreciate it. Again, hopefully, we can talk again, but I don't want to hold up anybody. But that's just my view as a driver for this long and an owner of a driving school, my wife and myself. And we want to see safety when it comes to that. And it definitely would help the backlog to get people on the road to drive safe for these companies. Okay? Thanks, folks.
Thanks, Ken. We agree with you. We agreed with Robert before you. Safety is number one. There are many very complexing issues out there. We have tremendous confidence in our MVLEs with their skill. And so we understand exactly what you're talking about. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ken. I think we were able to get Paul Maury back online. Paul, good morning. You should be off mute if you would like to speak.
I don't know if that was my good friend Joe there that muted me. Good morning, Joe and Janet. As my good friend Bobby Brisbane mentioned, the public-private partnership here, I think we can really work. Your MVLEs are bar none, probably the best. The consistency of the road tests have been great. Couple of questions that I have. New York State, the feds have declined to include nine to 15 passenger vehicles in their CDL testing. Will the department view what would be now an N1 or an N2 restrictions? Would the department view that as not something needed to be road tested in? Or if we wrote, if the person was to get a license, an N2 doesn't require a road test at this point, an N1 does, would we be able to, with our certified examiners, and I think Joseph Hilt brought it up initially, you've already certified them, they've gone through 30 hours of class to meet the minimum requirements of the department, just like many of the people in the truck and bus driving schools have done, whether that opening up that class at least opens up an area that would then not require the permit test, because it's not required in other states? I know there's a lot to think about, but I think we've caused, in one sense, our own complexity over the years. The nine to 15 passenger vehicles have fallen into this special category in New York State. And they're getting a CDL, but on the federal side, they're not recognized as a CDL. I could see Joe agreeing with me on that one. Other than that, I think the Were you saying something, Mark?
No, no. Go ahead, Paul.
Yeah. Working the way it is now, I assume we'd have to work under all the to, for the third-party testing, you know, follow their practices and everything. But I know on a federal level, we are trying to push it. I know, Mark, you've been very receptive to our discussions on this. Under the hood, we're spending a tremendous amount of time to get something done that's not enhancing safety, because Ross Coleman says we don't allow them to go under the hood. And I think what's happened is CDL was created in 1986, came out in 92. We gave a take-home test in New York. Joe's the only one to remember that one. And strangely enough, we passed. But I think we've lost sight, not the state at all, but on the federal side, that we created regulations literally 40 years ago that aren't applicable. We're going to be dealing with electric buses, electric vehicles. What are you going to do going under the hood to check? So that's where we are. I just appreciate everything the department does for us.
Paul, thank you. There's a lot to unpack there. This is the purpose for this hearing and we will do exactly that. We do agree, especially to what you said in the beginning, that our MVLEs are the best in the nation.
Totally agree.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker we have in line is Dave Christopher. Dave, you should be off mute.
Good morning, Assistant Commissioner, and thank you. And I want to start off by introducing myself, Dave Christopher. I'm the Executive Director of the New York Association of I'm the Executive Director of the New York Association for People Transportation, where as an association representing school transportation professionals from all across New York. And we, we bus kids to and from school. Huge responsibility. I want to begin by thanking Governor Holtschul and Commissioner Schroeder for taking this action to, to move third-party testing forward. In our state, NIAP has advocated for third-party testing for several years and we're very happy to see that it may become a possibility. As you know, New York experiencing unprecedented school bus driver shortage. We're estimating between fifty and twenty percent of the bus drivers who drove prior to the pandemic are no longer with us, which equates to around eight thousand school bus drivers. And it seriously affected our, our ability to deliver services to school districts and educational opportunities for kids. School districts are adjusting their schedules, canceling school in some cases. This is affecting arrival times, get home in the afternoon times, extracurricular programs, et cetera. And, and the worst case is we're finding that students are using alternative forms of transportation to get to school each day. And we all know that's not the safest option for kids. So we think that a third-party testing program is a very important initiative for our state to move forward with, to alleviate, to help alleviate this bus driver shortage. Training and testing of new drivers has been, at a reasonable amount of time, has always been a problem our industry's had to manage. Our industry is looking at our training processes to try to shorten that. And we're glad to see that DMV is looking at ways to shorten the time it takes to schedule a test. In, in this competitive labor market, it's, it's problematic to have a long wait time from the time a driver walks into the door to apply for a job, to the time that we can get that driver in the seat. So we, we certainly appreciate that the scheduling has improved greatly since September. Thank you, Governor Holtschul, for the directive to give school bus drivers some preference. And certainly I want to thank DMV for the work that they've done to improve scheduling times, testing and investigation. DMV has done a great job getting our drivers in. So we believe a third-party testing program will add more capacity. Mr. Schroeder, I heard you say that at the beginning, and we certainly agree with that and we're glad to hear that. It'll allow third-party testing entities to provide CDL tests in a timely manner without significant delay. And that's a critical component to attracting and retaining new school bus drivers. School bus drivers come into the job to make money. And when they have to wait, you know, long periods of time, we lose them to, to other, to other industries. So in terms of the other speakers, I, I totally agree that we're, New York is uniquely qualified to provide this, this service with our nineteen A certified examiners. We have a large cadre of qualified, dedicated people who test and oversee the performance of our drivers today in our state. They're familiar with New York State Vehicle Traffic Law, federal, federal regulation, and can readily qualify to become effective third-party testers and fulfill their requirements as dictated by federal regulation, New York's DMV. We certainly acknowledge there's concern about problem thirty with third-party testing program. We've heard that in the past and we've asked for this to be looked at. And we believe that the safeguards outlined in federal regulation and certainly DMV's oversight will provide sufficient protection against fraud. We fully support requirements that are necessary to ensure a safe and effective third-party system. In closing, we're committed to a safe transportation system. Safety is what this is all about. And we certainly will work with DMV in any way possible to make sure that this program succeeds. To that end, we stand ready to provide you with a list of high-performing public school transportation operations that are interested in piloting a program. Certainly reach out if you would like to contact those folks. And we're certainly willing to work with you for long-term solutions to solve the bus driver shortage problem, a very serious issue in terms of the education of our kids in our state. We believe you're moving in the right direction with this program. And again, we stand ready to assist in any way we can. And we want to thank Governor Holtschul and certainly our partner, DMV, for the work you're doing to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, David, and especially thank you for your very kind words to Governor Hochul. I will convey it to her, to what all of you have said. And, and I will also let her know that you appreciate her sense of urgency on this matter.
Absolutely, absolutely. The industry certainly appreciates what's been done since September. Various kinds of processes in place and help, particularly from you folks at DMV. I personally talked with some of you folks at DMV TNI and trying to schedule more prompt testing and they've been great. So it's, again, it's a partnership. We're all trying to do the right thing for kids.
Thank you. Thanks very much, David. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Our next speaker is Bill Harvey. Bill, you should be off mute and able to speak now.
Great, thank you. I did not have a statement prepared as I was not, not planning to be here today, but my schedule changed, so I did join. So thank you. I echo Dave's comments. I too am a member of NIAP. And I'm the Legislative Chair for NIAP. So we've worked closely, Dave and I, together on several initiatives to improve the, the driver shortage situation. Third-party testing has been one of those. And before I comment further on the third-party testing, I would say that we've been working with our local DMV and the supervisor there went as far as to email me last night. He and I were exchanging emails on how we could get a driver tested promptly. And we've got an appointment for next Friday. So huge, huge kudos to Kevin for his work in cooperating with not only myself, but all of those transportation operators in the Rochester region. I have been using primarily third-party testing out of Pennsylvania, probably for maybe three years now. I really enjoy the consistency of the road tests. It's about a two or two and a half hour road test. Most importantly to me is the scheduling flexibility that I get with third-party testing. I'm able to pick a day that I can accommodate the loss of the trainer and trainee. And that helps immensely for us to be able to pick a day and a time and fit it into our schedule. So the scheduling is really the, the biggest incentive for us. And with Kevin's efforts recently at the Rochester Region DMV, we're working with him. And if I can. From an efficiency standpoint, if I can test locally, that's to our advantage, certainly. So I'm very much a supporter of the concept of third-party testing. As everyone else has said, I think it increases capacity. And I think it offers an additional alternative. Those of us that test CDL drivers realize the significance, and that's been mentioned on this call from other contributors about the safety and the importance of us making sure we have the safest possible folks out there. And I think that's reflected in our training and the FMCSA entry-level driver training program will just further that. So again, I echo Dave's comments. We look forward to continued work with the New York State DMV to develop this program. And can't thank you enough for taking the time to dig into this and examine the possibilities and how we could kick off the program. Thank you.
Hey, hey, Bill, thank you, thank you very much. Now, you're, you're not related to Kevin, are you, in Rochester?
No, I'm not.
Bill, thank you. We will convey to Kevin that you appreciate him and his team there. So thanks very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. The next speaker we have on deck is Brian. Brian, I apologize if I mispronounced your last name. I think it's Prost. Prost?
Hi, hello, can you hear me?
We can.
We can't hear you. Welcome, Brian.
All right, it's, it's fine, no problem. My name's Probst, but that's totally okay. Thank, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I did want to thank everybody on the panel and Governor Hochul for setting up this, this forum for us to be able to speak. I know that there are, there are a lot of people listening and on here that are professionals and certainly more qualified than me. I'm lucky to speak, so I'm just going to take a couple moments of your time. I, this third-party testing or something similar to it isn't necessarily new to New York State. I know for myself, I began driving in two thousand and one. And when they added the S endorsement, they did that. And again, forgive me, I'm just, I'm kind of going off of my memory. Two thousand and five, two thousand and six, we did a ro, a written test in-house to add the S endorsement to our licenses, which is now part of the actual road test. And that road test is, is, is something that every driver must do to get their CDL license. As nineteen A examiners, which I am, and I apologize also, I'm, I'm from Independent Coach School Bus Company. And I'm a safety supervisor. I forgot to throw that in at the beginning. But I am a nineteen A examiner and an SBDI instructor. And part of our test as nineteen A examiners is we have to do a road test and then conduct a road test under the watchful eye of the DMV examiners to show that we're proficient and going to be able to teach others. Currently, we test new hires and current drivers yearly and periodically if necessary. Our company has drivers without an S endorsement, or they have taken a written test and converted their license to have an N-two restriction, which is seven adults or less. To upgrade these people, these are people we vetted that we know that are, you know, they're, they're like family to us. We're a smaller company, so we do, you know, we do have very good relationships with our drivers. These are people we would trust, who trust. So these would be the people that we would want to upgrade. As nineteen A examiners, we're willing to vet, test and certify these drivers, just like we do the drivers that work here. You know, we, we put our children on these buses and we care and we, and we, we, we stand behind them. My, my layman's approach to this, if I was, if I was doing it, would be, you know, to pay, have the drivers pay the road test fee. We conduct a test and they attest to the DMV. We attest to the DMV and then they go and they upgrade their licenses as far as from a school bus standpoint. Now, the last two points I want to make are, are very important because they purteil to think that we're seeing locally. We're in the Five Towns, which is right near New York City. And we're noticing that there are a lot of buses that look like a bus. They drive like a bus, but they have non-commercial plates. And what's happening is these vehicles are filling the gap and the vacuum for our need for drivers. Because these, they're using uncertified drivers to drive in our areas and pick up kids. This is something we've actually reported to DOT and are very concerned about because we know that they're not certified. And it's concerning to us because when there's a need, you know, the, sometimes the path of least resistance is to fill that vacuum in a, in a, in a possible illegal manner. So, you know, that's, that's something we're noticing. And allowing us to do this will head that off because there will not be a need for those companies or those people that don't have certifications, because we will be certifying them. And lastly, I, I, I can speak for myself and I know there's a lot of individuals on here that work in similar positions to me that are probably shaking their head yes to this or nodding up and down that I've been driving as a safety supervisor. And I do two runs in the morning, two runs in the afternoon. And that's taking me away from doing the safety-related test that I'm not only required to do, but I know I need to do to make sure these drivers are in compliance and safe. I mean, compliance is one thing, but making sure that they're safe is the most important part of what we do. So the more drivers we have, the more we would be able to, you know, eliminate that so that we could have our eyes on the proverbial road and paying attention to what they're doing. So I really thank you for the time. I mean, it was an honor to be able to speak and I, I thank you and wish you success. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, hey, Brian, thank you very, very much, especially in the beginning when you talked about our governor. When she first started on August twenty-fourth, she talked about transparency. Transparency is important to hear from everybody. Quite frankly, I, I was unaware of your concern having to do with the non-certified, not certified driver that you described. And so I will look into that along with our deputies here and, and also with our partners over at DOT. So thank you for that information, Brian.
Thank you very much and I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. The next speaker that we have is Kathy Casella. Kathy, you should be unmuted and able to speak.
Good morning, Kathy. Are you with us?
Small technical suggestion.
Kathy, your phone may be on, may be on mute.
Your, your phone may be muted.
Okay, why don't we circle back? Yeah, we'll circle back to Kathy.
We'll go to Stephen Polito.
Kathy, please send us a note either in chat or through the raise hand just to let us know if you're able to get your phone working again. The next speaker we have on deck is Stephen Polito. Stephen, go ahead.
Good morning, Stephen. Are you on? Okay, we'll try the next one.
All right.
The next speaker that we have is Al Hanley. Al, you should be good to go.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, hi, Al.
Sorry about that. Hi, I'm Al Hanley. I'm with the Transforce Group. And we operate CDL training and third-party testing programs across the nation in multiple time zones. And I also have a special affinity for New York State. I was born and raised in the upstate New York area, Albany. And coincidentally, my grandfather, my namesake, was a principal motor vehicle license examiner back in the late fifties when New York State implemented its classified licensing system. And his job was to go around New York State to train other examiners on how to administer the Class One and, and in the, in the classified driving exams. Along, along his journey with my grandmother, they founded a company called Chauffeurs Training School, which eventually became the CDL school in nineteen ninety-one, also founded in Albany, New York. And since then, we've grown. So we're very in favor, the Transforce Group is very in favor of this proposal. It works well in other states. It, it enables us to help more students and underemployed individuals join the ranks of America's truck drivers, which if we've all learned anything over the last two years, without trucks, America stops. And the DMV works very hard to administer these tests now, as they always have. But we need more capacity in the system. And this is a great way to create that capacity, provide market-based choice to individuals where they can go to a DMV if they want, or they could go to a private company, ideally like ourselves. We have over thirty years of experience administering CDL exams in other states. We would very much, we will be submitting comments before the deadline, but we very much like to be a part of this solution with New York State. Very willing to work with you in the implementation in Albany area or other areas around the state that you want to do it. We have the capacity, we have the know-how. And there's some excellent models out there already by states and best practices. So really, really, really excited to see my, my home state is, is moving in this direction. And thank you for your time.
Al, thank, thank you very much. Especially thank you for your historical perspective. I am a history buff. I actually know the timeline of the DMV starting back in nineteen oh-three. I am aware of what you are talking about, believe it or not, in the nineteen. I am aware of what you were talking about, believe it or not, uh, in the nineteen fifties with the CDL. So, uh, so I am really grateful, uh, for not only your historical comments, uh, but also for your kind words to your home state of New York and will continue to, uh, make you proud of us.
Thank you Commissioner.
Thank you Al. The next speaker that we have up is Kendra Hemm. Kendra?
Good morning, can you hear me?
We can. Can you speak up just a little?
Good morning Kendra, we're, we're very pleased to have you with us.
Good morning Commissioner, I'm pleased to be here. Um, Kendra Hemm, President of the Trucking Association of New York. We are going to be submitting more detailed written comments, so I'll be fairly brief this morning. Um, I do want to start though by thanking Governor Hokel and Commissioner Schroeder for your leadership on addressing the shortage of professional truck and bus drivers across the state. And we also want to thank all those motor vehicle inspectors, um, and examiners as well. We know they do not have an easy job and understand the stress that they're under as well and certainly appreciate what they're doing to try and get, um, more CDL drivers out on the road. Um, as we know, the COVID-nineteen pandemic has brought new attention to this issue, but the trucking industry has been struggling with a shortage of qualified truck drivers for many years. The pandemic only served to exasperate that problem. One significant challenge the industry faced during the height of the pandemic was getting qualified drivers on the road during the period of time when DMV offices were shut down and road tests were discontinued. Driving schools were still open, they were training much-needed drivers. However, with the inability for them to take their road tests due to state road testing sites being shut down, many of those prospective drivers were left with no choice but to seek alternate employment. So even prior to the pandemic, we've heard concerns from our members related to delays associated with scheduling appointments for road tests. And certainly the issue with scheduling road tests is not the cause of the driver shortage, but we do feel it is a contributing factor. So increasing access to road tests and expanding road test locations beyond the existing state sites will improve the efficiency, improve the process and help with getting much-needed qualified drivers behind the wheel and on the road quicker. We support the proposal to allow third-party testing in New York for this reason. We are currently working with peers from across the country that currently allow third-party testing in their states so that we can provide an industry perspective on what a successful program in New York could look like. Obviously, we'll be giving strong consideration to ensuring the safety and the, the integrity of the road test program. So I appreciate the opportunity to lend our support for this proposal and we look forward to working with you to develop a safe and an efficient program in New York. Thank you.
Kendra, thank, thank you very much for your testimony this morning. Uh, thank you for your kind words, uh, to our Governor Kathy Hokel. And, and thank you also for recognizing our MVLEs. Uh, and, and especially I want to thank you for working, uh, so diligently with, uh, Deputy Commissioner Joe Cristofoli and with Deputy Commissioner Janet Hall. Uh, I know that you are in constant contact with them and they are with you so that we can communicate and help each other in this vital industry. So thank you for your comments this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you Kendra. The next speaker that we have is John Spath. John, you should be.
Yep, hello, my name is, uh, John Spath, I'm the Transport Direct, uh, Transportation Director for two school districts over here in beautiful Chautauqua County, uh, Southwestern Central Schools and Friesburg Central Schools. Um, I'm also a DMV nineteen A certified examiner. Um, first, I would also like to thank, uh, Governor Hokel, uh, for making school bus drivers a priority these last, uh, uh, few months, um, it's helped out a lot. Um, I also, um, want to thank our local testing investigation unit out of Buffalo. Uh, Sue Budka is amazing to work with up there, um, very, very good people, they do an excellent job. Um, I also help train new drivers for both Class A and B CDL license through a local BOSI's adult education program. Uh, we have a group of very dedicated professionals and have a training program uh, that results in close to a hundred percent passing rate the first go-around. Uh, they really run a top-notch program there. Um, the big issue that we have is getting the test scheduled. Um, I think that a third-party testing would be a tremendous benefit for our area. In the past, uh, not just us, but other people, um, have had to send several CDL applicants down to Pennsylvania to get a third-party test, uh, just because of the timing. Um, it's very expensive. I think we could do it better here in New York. Um, not that there's anything wrong with PA, there's great people down there, but I'd rather see that right here. Um, uh, I think we, I think we have a tremendous opportunity here to really, um, move forward. And I think it's going to be great for everybody with the testing capacity. And, uh, in conjunction with our, uh, you know, local MVLEs, um, like, I, I like the fact that you said we're not looking to replace them, uh, but work with them. I think that's a, that's a great, uh, thing. So, uh, thank you for letting me speak today, I really appreciate it.
John, thank you, and again, thank you for your, your nice comments about our governor. Uh, also, I, I'm also from Western New York, so I understand when you say how beautiful it is there. And, uh, and I also will convey to Sue, when I do work, uh, out of the Buffalo office, uh, my office is next to Sue's office and I will tell her that you appreciate her work.
Thank you sir.
Thank you so much. Uh, I will interrupt just with a quick ask from our hard-working staff who are watching the, um, the chat and watching for raised hands. Um, just to ask is if after you've spoken, if you could just, um, lower your hand, uh, and re-click that button, that would be great. So, uh, we can focus on if, uh, the new raised hand so we can add to the list of speakers. But, um, thank you so much for that. Moving on to the next speaker, uh, John Carlo Pinto. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm John Carlo Pinto, I'm the Director of Operations, uh, with Ferrari Driving School. We're a large commercial driving school since nineteen sixty-eight, teaching driving in the New York City metropolitan area. We are, uh, big supporters of this. We'd like to thank the governor, the panelists here, um, everyone involved in, in trying to make this happen for, to supply CDL applicants with a real-world solutions to entering the workplace quickly and efficiently and safely. And we believe that we could, uh, we could definitely, private driving schools, all these other, uh, speakers that represent school bus, um, operators and large operators, that we could definitely help take the load off the shoulders of the Department of Motor Vehicles and really help, uh, get the solution to get drivers behind the wheel, making money and, um, and safely. And, uh, we, we're just big supporters of this and we'd like to thank you and, uh, we look forward to working with you in the future on this.
John Carlo, thank you for your comments and, uh, we are, I'm gonna, I'm gonna adopt what you said in terms of real-world solutions. That's really what we're interested in doing and that's why we're having this forum today to listen, uh, to everybody who has expertise on this matter from across the state. So thank you for your, for your comments.
Thank you so much. The next speaker that we have is Ben Green. Ben, you should be good to go.
Good morning everyone. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Thank you Commissioner and, and Governor. Um, I am a MVLE for the Department of Motor Vehicles, but I am also a, the Acting President for my DMV unit, twenty-three hundred for CSEA in New York City. Uh, as I look and I listen to, like, uh, I listened to the, the speaker before, we are, we also as MVLEs, we're working for the Department of Motor Vehicles, looking for real-world solutions. But we also have to be cautious about how we move in this, in this, this area. I would suggest and, um, you know, uh, make some suggestions. Uh, how is the Department of Motor Vehicle going to monitor conflict of interest of applicants and driving schools and third-party vendors? Uh, are we gonna really put safety first and how, how we're gonna monitor that? How are we gonna, um, monitor and do re-exam, uh, test that where people have had three weeks, um, three acts, who is gonna be able to do that? Are we gonna leave that to a third-party vendor? I understand the crisis and I, and I, and I, and I commend the governor and the commissioner for working collaboratively with our third-party vendors. But I do also have to worry about the cautions and safety that is gonna be out there. We have a lot of issues with other states with third-party vendors. We find out there's fraud on and then we end up have to go turn around to re-exam with these people and these applicants. I also agree with some of the, um, vendors and, uh, speakers today about the test. One of the reasons why we have this crisis and, and right now is because a lot of them are not being properly trained. So we need to worry, we need to work on that elaborately with our third-party vendors, the Department of Motor Vehicles and our, and our testing and investigation units on making sure that when they come to the test, that they're properly trained. Um, but one of my biggest suggestions that I would like to make is that we do this as a pilot, um, for six months so that we can iron out all the kinks. I'm not totally against the fact that we have third-party vendors that want to step up. And I have met a lot of nineteen A examiners that are fully trained. And I do, and, and as me as a MVLE, I have been driving commercial vehicles for a long time when I was in the military and I have my commercial license, so I'm very fully aware of what goes into being a commercial driver. And Ben, um, doing MVLE work for the last fifteen years, we, our MVLEs are very qualified and do know, even so, if they don't have their license, they do know, uh, a, their way around a commercial vehicle. Um, I just suggest that, and we take, and take under consideration that we form some kind of task force or some kind of committee so that we can sit down with third-party vendors, the commissioner, the governor and the DMV staff and come up with a, a real solution to this crisis and not just jump from the hip and we doing something that we're gonna turn back around later on and have to undo. Thank you Commissioner.
Yeah, Ben, thank you. Thank you very, very much for your comments, especially, uh, thank you for saying all the kind things about your brother and sister MVLEs. Uh, I too also have a leader, a, a, uh, a relationship, uh, with the CSEA leadership. Uh, so we will continue to talk, uh, on these subject matters. But I, I just want you to know Ben, I heard every word that you said and we will consider all things that you said today, um, on behalf of the MVLEs and DMV, so thank you.
Thank you so much Ben. The next, the next speaker that we have is Andrew Straight. Andrew, you should be, uh, good to speak.
All right, can you hear me?
We can.
We can hear you Andrew, good morning.
Good morning, thank you for doing this.
You're, you're welcome.
It's definitely, it's definitely, I believe, a need in Western New York here, at least in Buffalo. Um, I'm from Stevens Driving School, Stevens Trucking School in Western New York. Um, the Executive Director of Operations. Um, I guess I missed the first fifteen, twenty minutes of the call, I was at a doctor's appointment, so I, I don't know if you explained in full capacity what this is going to entail. Um, one of our biggest concerns was just the, the liability of the testing. Like what comes with the liability of the testing? Obviously, we have insurances and stuff in place, but not, you know, to the coverage that I guess would be, uh, to testing the person, putting them on the road. Like we get them to a certain point, you guys test them as the DMV currently, you know, sits and then that's where it goes. Uh, where does that fall relative to the, uh, to the insurance liability issue?
Andrew, uh, the, the, the purpose, uh, thank, thank you for, for your testimony. The purpose of today is that we here at DMV, we wanted to listen, uh, to everything, uh, that's being said across the state. Uh, so we will take into consideration exactly what you're talking about in terms of liability. And as we go forward, putting together this plan, uh, we, we will address that and we will be open and available, uh, to answer any particular or specific questions that you might have.
Okay, so that's for later down the road then. No pun intended, but.
Yeah, no, no, that's great. Thank you. Thanks Andrew.
Okay, um, and yeah, no, I do appreciate this. I think it'd be a huge advantage because like I said, the limited, um, I guess, we've, we've moved the testing site here in Western New York, um, three times in the last three years. So I mean, we've had limited space, limited availability. Um, so it would definitely be advantageous to be able to, to test these, these drivers. Um, it's just, that's what we kind of were most concerned with, was the liability coming out with it. Uh, because we test and we have a, I forget what it is now, eighty-nine percent pass rate first time around. So I mean, our drivers are very safe, they're comfortable on the road and everything else. But if we were to test other, uh, driving schools in the area that we know are not as diligent about their, uh, safety practices or, uh, even if we had some coming out of our school that should still be, you know, practicing a little bit more, um, we just want to make sure that we're, you know, we're on the right track as far as the liability of them coming out of there, so.
Yeah, Andrew, thank you, and, and as I noted, this, this is the beginning of the communication process with all of you. Uh, and so we wanted to hear exactly, uh, what you're all talking about and then we will be able to, uh, you know, figure out how to go forward. So thank you very much for your observations.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
You're welcome Andrew, thank you.
Thank you Andrew. The next speaker that we have up is, uh, Nick Valone. Nick, you should, uh, be clear to speak.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you Nick, welcome. Good morning.
Good morning, good morning. Uh, thank you Commissioner Schroder, everybody at the DMV and a, and a thank you to, to our governor for, for moving this initiative forward. Uh, my name is Nicholas Valone, I am the President of the New York School Bus Contractors Association. Uh, we are the largest provider of school transportation here in New York State, representing about sixty percent of school buses on the road. Um, it has been a, a lot of testimony so far, so I will not rehash everything. Commissioner Schroder, you are spot-on in your opening remarks on accessibility, which will then lead to flexibility and the fact that we want to act as a supplemental, uh, partner and not replace the current DMV, uh, process. Uh, that said, uh, you know, I want to reiterate the crisis that we are in when it comes to drivers and, and say that third-party testing is the answer to this, to this crisis. Uh, there has been a lot of talk about, uh, the backlog that we are dealing with. Uh, and all of that is, is valid, uh, but to be honest, if we cleared that backlog overnight, we would still, as a state, be short on school bus drivers. And, um, I truly believe that the, the third-party testing, uh, will expand this opportunity and expand the professional driving opportunity to people that maybe did not consider driving in the past. Currently, to drive a commercial vehicle, the DMV is the sole gatekeeper and the DMV only has, uh, you know, the, the capacity that it, that it has. I believe that, uh, expanding to third-party testing makes this, um, process not only more accessible, not only more flexible, but more approachable to an individual who, um, maybe would not have considered professional driving as a career, uh, in the past. And I think that's incredibly, incredibly important to mention because as other speakers have mentioned, uh, we are competing, uh, for a workforce that today has many other options. So opening up, you know, more avenues and more approachable avenues to commercial driving, uh, is paramount here. And I'll just reiterate, I think a couple of good ways to do it and good ideas is obviously the use of nineteen A examiners and SPDIs. We are, you know, uh, you know, the only in my, to my knowledge, um, publicly sanctioned privately-employed, uh, examiners in the state and that's in regards to, to school bus drivers. Um, and I will say that, uh, that the, the third-party road testing is, is a phenomenal first step. Uh, and we are in full support. And I would like to expand the conversation somewhere down the road to include permitting. Um, because there is still that, that DMV gatekeeper aspect to the permit testing, which is another point of, of failure and discouragement and loss of recruit that we see when we bring them through the training process. And I think all the points that I previously made on a more approachable, um, situation here will be equally, if not more so, effective when it comes to the permitting process uh, of the commercial driver, uh, license to obtain a commercial driver license. Um, and I'll just end with, um, I think some things that we should steer away from, which is, you know, is placing, uh, too strict of limits on where and how we expand. you know, is placing too strict of limits on where and how we expand this. For instance, you know, I think we should set guidelines, and if met, those entities willing to perform third-party testing should be approved. And I think placing a cap on approvals is not a great initial approach. And there has been no discussion of that. I just wanted to make that comment. And to just reiterate that we stand ready, as the New York School Bus Contractors Association, with our full arsenal of 19A examiners, school bus driver instructors, master school bus driver instructors, but also to work with you hand-in-hand with the other organizations here on the call, being NIAEP, being the National School of Transportation Association, being the Bus Association of New York, and the Commercial Vehicle Trainers Association. So, again, thank you for your time, and we look forward to working with all of you as we have done so successfully in the past, going into the future.
Nicholas, thank you. And here at DMV, we'll stay in our lane, and we're really going to work on what we've been discussing today regarding CDLs. I can tell you, just thirty days after Governor Kathy Hochul became governor, I met with her, and the number-one thing on her mind that she conveyed to me is the severe shortage of bus drivers and truck drivers in our state and in our nation. So, I can tell you it's on her mind, there's a sense of urgency, and we're going to do our best together to try to work through this.
Thank you, Nick. The next speaker we have is Bob Zarelo. Bob, you are good to speak. Looks like you might still have yourself on mute, Bob.
Okay, how about that?
You're good.
Good morning. Welcome.
Thank you, and thank you for holding this hearing. I'm Bob Zarelo. I'm the Policy Director for the New York Public Transit Association. We represent all the public transit systems around the state, from the MTA, the New York Metro Area, to Buffalo, to Albany, to Watertown. So, we have transit service all over the state. We, our members, many of them also operate school bus service as well, both under contracts with school districts and also just school kids who get on the regular buses. So, you know, we're important to not only moving people, but moving school kids as well. I want to thank Governor Hochul and thank DMV for paying attention to this issue since she came in office, as you said, Commissioner, in doing what you have been able to do so far in the months leading up to now. And we certainly support this proposal wholeheartedly to expand CDL testing. We believe you should allow the larger public authorities, the regional transportation authorities, as well as any other transit system that has the ability to conduct these tests, to have that ability as soon as possible to try to relieve this shortage. Obviously, transit systems have a vested interest in having qualified drivers, because once they test and train them, they are members and employees of their transit system. So, you know, they have a vested interest in good quality employees and getting good quality drivers. So, safety, the safety issue that others have mentioned, obviously, is at the forefront for public transit, and we believe this proposal can help. I know you mentioned early that you think the initial application of this proposal would be to state agencies. I guess we would encourage you to expand that to regional transportation authorities, who are quasi-state agencies and large organizations that have the ability to do these tests. So, we would say that all transit systems should have the ability eventually, if they have qualified examiners, but certainly for this initial period, to include the regional transportation authorities. And I guess my, just my last comment is, you know, given the crisis that the governor and you have mentioned, and others as well, and the need to act immediately, I guess we would recommend that just don't let the perfect stand in the way of the good here. You know, this crisis needs to be addressed in some manner. It may not be perfect, whatever's rolled out, but can be made better. So, please implement this as quickly as possible. We think it's to the benefit of all New Yorkers. So, thank you for the opportunity. We did submit comments for the record, so there's a longer statement that you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Bob. And just so you know, everything is on the table. As we've indicated, we are going to start with state agencies and authorities. You know, here at DMV, we've had, you know, prior relationships with MTA, with DOT, but everything is on the table in terms of state agencies and authorities who can assist in this situation. So, thank you for your comments.
Great. Thank you for that openness. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Bob. The next speaker that we have up is William Okarski. William, go ahead.
Good morning. My name is William Okarski. I'm President of National Tractor Trailer School, and I'm testifying today on behalf of Commercial Vehicle Training Association, CVTA. In May of nineteen seventy-one, I along with, excuse me, my business partner, Harry Kowalczek, opened National Tractor Trailer School. We have trained over forty thousand men and women to become licensed truck and tractor-trailer drivers with strong emphasis on safety always. National Tractor Trailer School has locations throughout the Empire State, in Buffalo, Liverpool, and on Fort Drum. Founded in nineteen sixty-six, CVTA is the largest association representing commercial truck driver training programs in the United States. Our members represent nearly two hundred and forty training providers in forty-two states and trains over fifty-five thousand commercial drivers annually. CVTA advocates for policies that enhance safety through commercial driver training, reduce barriers for those seeking entry into the trucking and bus industries, and further advance overall driver professionalism. CVTA is proud to have a robust profile of members throughout New York who train the next generation of safe, commercial drivers. CVTA commends the state of New York for taking this important step to alleviate truck and bus driver shortage and get people from all walks of life into good-paying jobs in the trucking and bus industry. We know that by allowing qualified third parties, like my staff and colleagues, to offer road tests, will create more testing locations statewide and expand the capacity at the existing state-run sites, reducing the time it takes to get qualified CDL drivers on the road. My fellow CVTA members have seen this in their states that have allowed third-party testing for years. This proposal also aligns with the federal government's action plan to strengthen Americans' trucking workforce by encouraging all states to move towards third-party testing. For years, new entrants into the trucking industry have experienced delays obtaining their CDL from the state's DMVs. These delays have hurt working families and contribute to the disruption of our supply chains. The COVID-19 crisis revealed underlying systemic problems with CDL testing in certain states, which certainly existed prior to COVID-19. The current backlog for commercial driver testing in the state of New York can be up to months and is growing. This proposal by the New York State Department of Motor Vehicles is long overdue, but welcomed by my colleagues in the commercial driver training sector. The American and state of New York's economy are experiencing severe disruptions in the supply chain, while thousands of our fellow New Yorkers do not have adequate, dignified, and steady employment. All of us here today have seen multiple reports of industries that do not have adequate supplies to manufacture products or deliver essential goods such as fuel, food, medical supplies. The trucking industry delivers seventy-one percent of the total U.S. freight tonnage, and according to the American Trucking Association, ATA, the industry is experiencing a driver shortage of over eighty thousand drivers. And if the current trends hold, the shortage could swell to over a hundred and sixty thousand in 2028. As of today, there are over fifteen thousand open jobs in the commercial driver industry in the state of New York. This proposal would help drive down New York's unemployment rate and get them into good-paying jobs. The truck driver shortage, contractions in the supply chain pose a risk to our economic security and growth. The commercial driver, driving industry, its training schools, and its carriers are open to new entrants and are ready to train and hire them for the good-paying jobs that they offer. And thank you for giving us the opportunity to comment on this proposal. CVTA certainly looks forward to working with the Department of Motor Vehicles and our training transportation partners, you know, to clearing the road of testing bottlenecks in the driver's seat to prosperity. If I may say on a, any personal note, I'm certainly, you know, it's been fifty years in the trading business, in the good state of New York, and I've been a pilot for over forty years. I've attended flight schools and have increased my flight training and ratings for many years. The flight schools that we have in this country have on-staff designated FAA examiners. So, when I train for weeks at a time, the good thing about that is if I finish on a Tuesday morning, because of having an FAA examiner on staff, I may take that flight test Tuesday afternoon or Wednesday. It is the same thing with CDLs. When we're training to get a CDLA, CDLB, there's a lot of intense training. The worst thing that can happen is we send them home for one, two, or three weeks before they take that test. We are on top of our game as soon as we finish. So, NTTS is certainly in favor of third-party testing, so we can really treat that graduate and that driver right and get them into a good-paying job immediately. And thank you very, very much for this time.
William, thank you, and especially thank you and your company for training over forty thousand men and women, keeping that safety is number one. When you were talking about the wait times, the wait times during the height of COVID, you know, was relatively high, but we've done our best to keep that under control. But as Robert, one of the earlier speakers, Robert from Motor Coach, talked about the influx of hopefully new applicants for the CDL process. So, that's one of the reasons why we want to be able to have this discussion today. And also, thank you for the correlation that you made between CDL and your experience on the pilot side. We've heard you clearly. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, William. The next speaker that we have is Alfred Karam. Alfred, you should be clear to go.
Good morning, Commissioner. My name is Alfred Karam. I am Director of Transportation from Shenandoah Central School District, just north of Albany. I appreciate this opportunity to speak. A lot of great speakers already. I support all the positions that have played out. I highly appreciate Governor Hochul coming up and opposing this initiative, and of course, DMV for supporting it and looking into it. So, thank you, Commissioner, and to the outstanding job that the motor vehicle license examiners have always done and will continue to do. And certainly, we're not trying to say that we want to replace them. As you said earlier, we're just here to supplement. I want to advocate for the certified 19A examiners to be part of the solution. These are highly-trained, highly passionate individuals, especially on the school transportation side. They love what they do, and they are all about safety, and they do their job well. As you may already know, these 19A examiners have to recertify drivers within their operations every year by doing behind-the-wheel training or recertification. And I can tell you my own operation, not everybody passes. I will have the failure every now and then, because we do look at everybody with a critical eye, just like the MVL Es. So, I appreciate all these efforts. My biggest concern, and I wanted to share that with you from my lens of operational lens, right? So, typically, right now, it takes us about two, maybe two and a half months to get someone in through the pipeline from the initial interview until they start driving the school bus. The reason for that is our trainers are bus drivers, and they can only train in between the morning runs and the afternoon runs. You're looking at a couple of hours a day, two and a half hours a day. But the ELDT coming online here just around the corner, that's going to probably add another, I'm estimating, thirty hours of training, so probably another three to four weeks on top of that. So, we do really need to come up, as you said earlier, of someone, a real-world solution to this problem. We can't go three months with someone in the training pipeline before they can start earning money. The 19A examiners should really be the cornerstone of any solution that DMV could provide. And I won't take any more of your time. I would say maybe take a look at allowing the 19As, these operations, to opt in, or like we do with the FMCSA training provider, whether we want to be a private provider or a public provider. That's something you may want to take a look at. So, thank you for your time, and I appreciate all that DMV has done for us.
Alfred, thank you very much for taking this opportunity to convey to us your testimony, and we will take everything into account. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. The next speaker is Shannon Goodell. Shannon?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Good morning, Shannon.
Thank you for letting me circle back. I was nervous being called on second, and my mind has been going crazy listening to everybody else and the concerns and the suggestions that they have. And although I am not a New York resident, I do visit for work, because we have a pretty good presence in that area. And I can't honestly envision operating a school bus company without the ability to have third-party. We do, in a given year, pre-COVID, well over a thousand tests a year. And the safety aspect of it, I'm not in commercial trucking, and I very much respect what they do. We're transporting people's children, so everybody who's involved in the training process of it, as well as the testing process of it, understands the gravity of what they're doing when they're testing. And the partnership between the state and the organizations and the individual safety officers that are allowed to conduct these tests is critical. So, the state where I'm at, they provide the training, and it's the same training that the DMV testers receive, which helps individuals to test as well, because the consistency is going to be there. They address, you know, the safety aspect of it as well by conducting random programming. I talked to the gentleman who manages this program at the Secretary of State where I work, and I asked him if there is anything in your program or anything that you do that you wish you could change. He said the most difficult aspect of it is the time that it takes to get the computer databases updated for scheduling and entering the data into the system to generate whenever there's change. He said typically, at this point, it flows well with checks and balances, but it's the IT end of it that seems to be the most challenging. With the new rule coming out from the Fed, you know, there's IT aspects that have to be added into it as well with that, and it ties directly to this. I'd love to see this going forward in New York. And again, even when it does come to safety, the, one of the gentlemen had asked about the liability, most of the facilities, and I have other states that have third-party testing as well, just not to the size, is the one I'm referring to, is they have to carry surety bounds. There's quite an application checklist, and at least for the size of the state that I work directly with. It's managed out of the state by a general manager of that department, who has a team of six auditors. who has a team of six auditors that handles, I mean, they audit and work with the branch licenses regarding the facilities, the locations themselves, as well as the safety officers and audit the documentation that goes into that to make sure everything is met. On the school bus side of things, we're limited so very much in the first place between state regulations, requirements, classes, training, as well as the federal because we fall under the CDL requirements, the medical requirements. And we're not, we're not hiring typically individuals who are going to pull a 40-hour week. We're looking for individuals who are, are willing to, you know, care for children as well as operate that commercial vehicle at the same time. So generally speaking, pre-COVID and post-COVID, when somebody is finished and ready to road test, we have a two-day turnaround time before that individual can test. And the turnaround time thereafter, if there is a failure for anything, is again, a two-day wait period. And that's just for the IT parts to re-upload. So the turnaround time to get to where, if you're on a 30-day wait or something like that, if you were to fail out, it's still, you're going to have that knowledge of whether or not this is somebody you can move forward with, you know, in a week versus 30 days or potentially longer. And with the training time that it does take to, to train somebody who's going to work with students meet state requirements plus federal requirements, to wait anything more than, you know, that short period a day, they're walking away. The ability to test in an area, location that they're familiar with, the, the road, the drive portion of it on streets that they've trained on is for nerves and, and passing, is really beneficial for the candidate. We use the DMV at different times as well. And the success rate is still the same, but the anxiety level of the individuals is very different from just being in a more familiar environment. So there's, I, I could go on for an hour and tell you of all of the benefits that come from being able to, to do it. And there's, there's plenty of good practices in place across many different states to, to make sure that the safety and the integrity of the program is upheld. So that's all. Thank you so much for, for letting me speak on that.
Shannon, thank you very much for your testimony. In, in September, the governor unveiled a series of actions to reduce barriers. So we, we hear exactly what you're saying in terms of the database and the delays and, and needing really to have IT and ITS, you know, be helpful in expediting this. And also as other speakers have talked about, you know, liability, we, we hear you loud and clear and we're going to be addressing all of these issues that have been brought up today. So thank you.
You're welcome. I'm really excited to hear that New York is, is at this place finally. And it's, I think it's going to be, you guys are going to do well, really well.
Thank you. Thanks, Shannon.
Thank you. The next speaker that we have up is Andrew Miranda. Andrew, you are good to go.
Good morning. Good morning. Can you hear me?
Good morning, Andrew. We can hear you loud and clear.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner, for your time. And we'd like to thank the governor. My name is Andrew Miranda. I'm the Deputy Director of Safety and Training here at Liberty Lines Transit and West Houston Company. We are a private company contracted by the ground new west test that is a supply transit service for them. I am in fame. A lot of people, I've heard a lot of, you know, the speakers speak about 19A certified examiners. We do have, our company does supply, keep up with the 19A law. We're all certified examiners here. We, we work hard to keep people in compliance and we are certified to give the biennial behind the wheel testing, written test and everything else that goes along with the 19A law. We are, New York State certified us. We take a road test. I think we're all highly qualified and we practice, we are really on the safety side of commercial driver's license and the safety thing behind the wheel. We supply 30 hours of training behind the wheel. Actually, we go further beyond. We actually do 40 hours of classroom, a combination of classroom and behind the wheel training. And I really believe that it could be a great asset to the state of New York to utilize us and help us, help you, we can work together so we can try to get this, uh, punch for drivers that we have. Probably we supply service and they're having trouble supplying the service because we don't have drivers. And if our drivers don't go out, we affect the economy, can't get people to work, we can't get people to school. So we really need to try to get something and we're in favor of this 100%.
Andrew, thank you very much for your testimony. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. The next speaker that we have up is Karam Johnson. Karam, you should be taken off mute.
Good morning. I would like to thank Governor Hochul, the New York State DMV, and all others who are working to make CDL third-party testing a reality in New York State. I am the Director of Student Transportation for the Bethlehem Central School District here in the Albany area. I've been a third-party tester for my school district in my previous state since 2007. Since arriving here, I have been certified as a 19A examiner for my district. Based upon my experience as a third-party examiner, I can testify to the fact the program, this program is safe and allows only the highest quality of school bus drivers on the road. I believe allowing CDL third-party testing in New York State will assist districts with getting safe and qualified drivers ready to serve our students. And I commit my full support to this initiative. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time and for sharing with us all of the information that's coming out of the capital region of Albany. So thank you, Karam.
Thank you. We actually, I think, are at the end of the list of folks who wanted to speak. I will open it up and hopefully not overwhelm our folks who are overlooking the, the chat. If there is anyone who still wants to say something or, or speak again, please raise your hand to, to let us know. Andrew, Andrew Shire, I think we see that you want to speak again. You should be able to speak now.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, sorry. I, like I said, I got late onto the call. So I just wanted to kind of circle back to, did you, um, did you speak to the idea like what the requirements would be, like for a certificate or certain credentials or whatever to avoid the fraud or anything else where, you know, people are just passing everybody that comes through their doors? Have you spoken to any of that or is this just a, just a briefing, just to see where people land, people fall or whatever? And, and then we go from there because I'm just kind of, because like what we do right now is I do some testing for the DMV for, I'm a CDRS, a Certified Driver Rehab Specialist. So we do some testing for the Class D licenses already. I'm a chief instructor and a certified trainer, so I can train our trainers for the CDL program. So I was just kind of curious as to whether you guys had discussed any of the credentials that would be involved with, with doing the third-party testing? Or is it just going to be open to anybody that does offer those services for CDL?
Yeah. No, thank, thank you. Thank you, Andrew. And in the beginning, I did give an overview of what the governor's vision is and what we're trying to do here at DMV. I did, when I finished, I did turn it over to Deputy Commissioner Joe Christopher Foley, who runs operations. So what, what I'll ask him to do, it's only maybe four or five bulletin points, but it fits into, in terms of what you're looking for. So, so I'll, I'll just turn it over to Joe to restate that.
Perfect. Thank you. Yeah, and I'll just, you know, and I did preface it when I spoke earlier that, you know, what I'm providing. No, no, no. It's, what I'm providing is just kind of like tentative right now and just represents our initial thoughts. This hearing is particularly important to us to gather the information. I mean, there's been a wealth of information throughout this hearing. I want to just thank everybody for their submissions and, and their, their time today because we really, it, it really has been helpful. And there was a lot of talk to your, to your question, Andrew, about, you know, certified examiners in the 19A program, aligning with that. But what I did provide is just that, you know, right now, it is, it is, it is tentative and our, our plans are obviously to follow through the federal requirements for establishing our criteria. So we would, we would absolutely use that as a guide for us in, in establishing what other criteria are. But we do know that fundamentally, the, the broad aspects of it, you know, the training and certification process is key for us, having that monitoring and audit process is also key. And, and that we have all the reporting requirements that are required by the federal regulations. I mean, those three aspects of it certainly be part of our program. And I think it was reinforced today through the hearing. So as I said, I appreciate that. We did also talk about as far as the program is initially, starting with our sister agencies. It's, it's come up a couple of times in discussion. And from there, refine and develop our program and, and start moving out and progressing.
That's, I didn't know if you were moving on from a metric that you had used previously from another state or another county or another, anything that you were going to move forward to, you know, to us. So that, that would be good. And then if you have any, do you guys have any literature on this that you've, like, the minutes of today or anything that you can send out to us that we could see this?
Yeah, Andrew, this is Janet speaking. Let me take off my mask for a minute. We will be posting the, the recorded video. This, this hearing is being recorded. So that will be posted on our website once the hearing is complete. It may take us a day or two kind of to turn it around and get it up, but it will be available. And our intent also is, to the extent possible, share a lot of the written commentary and the commissioner's opening comments and testimony at the beginning of this hearing as well. So you should be able to see all of that. And I think that there will be a lot of communication just as we move forward as well. And we put out more information.
Also, Andrew, in, in the beginning, there was a speaker who spoke about what happens in Illinois. There was also some references in terms of Pennsylvania. So, so as Janet alluded, all of this will be available so that if people weren't able to stay on the entire hearing, you know, time slot, you'll be able to get other information. And we will do our best to provide information to make it easier in terms of all of us making decisions going forward.
That was, that was kind of, that was kind of part two was like I, we, we dealt with a, it was just happenstance, but we, people developing some software for us for our man, fleet management, et cetera. They live in, work in Michigan and they also have third-party testers. They have testers right on site that do their testing for them. So we were just kind of, you know, do you, are you referencing these other places or are you just kind of trying to create your own in New York here? So I guess that was part two of the question was, do you need more references? Do you want to talk to the folks that we've talked to that have, you know, these, have been doing the third-party testing for, for years as far as it sounds from them?
I think it would be very helpful in the written comments if, if people want to share. And I think the email address has been provided a few times. You know, whatever information you think would be valuable for us as resources. I do have to say, we do have relationships with other, other states. And also the Association of Motor Vehicle Administrators, ANVA, is a phenomenal organization that really provides a wealth of information from across the country and Canada. So we definitely will rely on them as well to, to assist us, as well as everything we've learned here today. So thanks for that.
Perfect. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. The next speaker we have is Frank Klein. Frank, go ahead.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Frank. Good morning. Go right ahead.
I'd like to thank the panelists and the current administration for this. I think it's a great thing to reach out to those stakeholders, to get information and get our opinions on what we feel about this. I, I work for Suffolk Transportation Service. I'm in Suffolk County, Long Island, a school bus company. I and we are for third-party testing. I think it will be a tremendous help if done the right way. Listening to all the great people that spoke so far, I did have a couple of concerns. One, the conflict of interest brought up by Mr. Green. I would hate to see the degradation of the safety programs by, you know, having the severe need of drivers, you know, making people do things that maybe aren't the right things and getting drivers behind the wheel. So that definitely concerns me. I mean, we've worked long and hard to uphold such a great safety standard here in New York and I hate to see that degraded. So conflict of interest definitely is something I worry about. Also, something I know that's been an issue with DMV is tester safety. I would like to see something written in somewhere, you know, something for protection, the third-party testers as they should be for MVs out there. Also, communication, as we know, ELDT is coming up February 7th. We're not sure how that works between the feds and the state right now, more or less. If we had to add a third party into the system to make sure they are also qualified through the feds to take a road test. So that communication does concern me. A couple of little things is maybe think about down the road incorporating third-party testing into 19A examiner courses. I know it's a requirement for the feds to have a course. And maybe that could be a one-stop shop down the road for people who want to be 19As and/or third-party testers. And another quick thing is what would be the idea of maybe using DMV now, road test sites, when they're not in use by third-party people? Because Saturday or Sunday being the route of your certified course. Again, these are just things that popped up.
Yeah. Do you, do you have more to say, Frank?
No, I just said those are things that I kind of picked up during this conversation. And again, I don't know, did you hear my last comment about using DMV courses now, CDL road test courses?
Yes. Yeah. Thank you for all of your comments. Everything that you've said and everything that's been said this morning will be taken into consideration and we'll do our best to communicate with all the principals, with everybody involved in this process today. So thank you very much, Frank.
Thank you, folks. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Frank. The next speaker that we have is Kenneth Meyer. Kenneth?
Yes, thank you again. I just, just a couple more comments. Myself and my wife is being a small driving school down here in the Hudson Valley. We've been in business about 20 years and I listened before to Kendra Hemms who had talked. I've known her for years and as she said, this driver shortage has been going on trucks and buses for probably the better part of 10 years. The pandemic unfortunately has forced many more drivers into retirement. I worked through the majority of it. I actually just retired in May of last year. And again, the biggest thing, our baby boomers are retiring, myself included. The training that is starting on February 7th and we're in a process of getting registered to be a, in that training provider registry that the FMCSA has, they delayed it and it's now being put into effect. The good thing is more training will be required. All of my training since day one, and we've had several people speak before Capitol Hill years back. A friend of mine who was on the America's Road Team, all of our training is done one-on-one. Again, we're just a small business, but we've been in business 20 years. And the one-on-one training, which train has changed when the pandemic hit in the car lessons now that New York State, we have to do one-on-one. We've done that since day one. So that hasn't changed in the car or in the truck. But this should make it better, the third-party testing to get people into the industry. And unfortunately, what's happening now is because retention, whether it's a bus driver, truck drivers, people are being pushed, as the one fellow was talking about, he's supposed to be doing his work in the classroom and, and all of his stuff that he has, but now he's doing bus runs every day. And the same thing's going on in the trucking industry because of the shortage. But again, I want to thank you all and the governor for letting us get in on this. We, we appreciate it and whatever help you can give us, a small guy's too, is appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Thank you very, very much. And thank you also for staying on for the entire time and for giving us your comments. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Ken. At this point, I don't think that we have any more speakers. I will just pause for a minute. Again, if anyone does want to speak, you can.
Again, if anyone does want to speak, you can raise your hand. But I will, while we're going over that, I just wanted to read out some questions that we got in the Q and A box. I mean, I think some of it may have been addressed by Joe's response earlier, but I will read out these questions and as we move forward, we will try to get answers back to you all, since I think we have your email addresses. So from Daryl Rhodes, will the permit test be offered online like the Class D permit? Sorry, I'm taking off my mask so you might be able to hear me better, except for it's stuck. I think at this point, we'll have to get back to you with a response on that question, but we note it and it's, you know, recorded out here. From Ben Green, how will DMV be monitoring the third-party vendors? I think we heard you ask this question when you spoke earlier as well, and certainly it's something that we will all be working together and communicating with this group and all the stakeholders as we move forward to put forth a final plan. And then from Heather Snow, how long does it take for a trainer to be certified and what are the costs? And I again, think this goes back a little bit to Joe's previous statement, which is, you know, I think at this point in time, the details of the exact plan are, we're still kind of finalizing. We wanted to make sure that we got everyone's input through this hearing. It's really important that we hear from you all, hear your points of view, get your questions, and we look forward to working with all of you as we move forward to finalize the plan. And with that, I don't need-
Has anybody new that's been added?
Allow me just to conclude. I want to thank everybody who participated today. I especially want to thank our governor for her initiative, recognizing that there is a severe shortage of truck drivers and bus drivers in New York State and for us to try to do something about it. This was this forum today and under her transparency program, she wants to hear from all of you. So now we've heard from you and so now we have a responsibility here at DMV to communicate back with you in terms of what the next steps are. So I just want to also thank our MVEs and also the deputies and the senior managers here at DMV. We are taking this very seriously and we will do our best going forward. And just now, just a point of personal privilege, I want to especially thank our American Sign Language interpreters, John and Jennifer, for joining us today. Many, many years ago, I worked for St. Mary's School for the Deaf in Buffalo. I am very, very rusty with my sign language, so thank God we had John and Jennifer. So thank you, everybody, and we appreciate this opportunity to speak to you today.
Thank you, everyone. And I will just repeat again, please, please don't hesitate to send us any questions and comments to the email address, which has been mentioned a couple of times today and was included in the initial press release about this hearing. It is cdlthirdpartytesting@dmv.ny.gov. Again, that's C D L third-party testing at dmv.ny.gov. And the first section before the at is all one word. So thank you very much, everyone, for your time and attendance today.
Thank you for me as well.